Watch us. Don't think we don't get advertising money. We have to get back. We have to wait till level of things is on, right? It's been seven weeks I forget the procedure.
Well, we're just empty because everyone's at Third Thursday.
Oh, Third Thursday. Oh, yeah, it's not. No one's going to be watching us. We should have put a TV up at Third Thursday.
It should be live, yeah. Might be on the other channel. Or there might be that much of it that I can't hear.
Oh, there we are. Now we're live, okay. I can see me, that's me over there, right? All right, so why don't we start with the Pledge of Allegiance? Evening, welcome to our June 13th Planning Board meeting. We're a little rusty because we haven't done this in about seven weeks, I think. Has it been seven, six weeks?
It did a little while.
It's been a while, yeah, so. The first order of business is board elections and appointments. And I'd like to start out by nominating Jeff Yates as chairman of the Planning Board. I've had a couple of years of fun and if Jeff wants to do it, I'd be happy to turn the reins over to Jeff. He did a great job at town meeting and I think it'd be great if you were chair of the Planning Board.
Thank you.
Oh, second?
Oh, excuse me, before that, I'd like to welcome Daryl Baker.
Yes, I'm just gonna jump right in.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Welcome, welcome to the Planning Board.
Oh, Daryl, have you done your stuff at the, okay, good.
We have, oh, we even have real names for them, all right. Welcome, by the way. Thank you for the second. All those in favor of Jeff being chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good.
I nominate Mark for vice chair. I think his, especially for the last, what, how many years have you been doing this? Your institutional memory is valuable. So, I, can I hear a second?
Second?
Well, I actually wanted to hear whether or not Mr. Bartlet Harvey would like to because he has not
That's true.
Had an opportunity to be vice chair and so I wanted to see if...
I think I'm still a little green for that position, so.
Plus, you are clerk.
I've been clerk for a year or something, yeah. Maren has overtaken some of my duties, but reading the statements, but...
So I take it that that is, you would not like to accept the nomination?
I would prefer not to be appointed to that position.
Okay, can I hear a second for Mark? A second for Mark. So, let's vote on Mark, appointing Mark as vice chair.
Aye.
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 I can't vote for myself right now.
Well, you can. Bartlet, would you still like to be clerk? Would you?
It's pretty light lifting.
I would actually like to nominate Daryl, given the fact that he's new to the board.
Okay, so Daryl, you're the last person in, so.
Is that right? We are assigning you the really signal honor of courtship. Unless Bartlet, you want to fight for it?
No, I'm willing to give it up.
Okay. I nominate Daryl for clerk.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I actually nominated Daryl for clerk, but that's okay.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
You can second if you'd like.
I'll second. All in favor of Daryl for clerk? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's the first item on our agenda.
Do you want to talk about the hours before we jump into bills and everything else?
Well, it's not on the agenda, but how do we, you know, 6:30 is better for you.
It is.
I concur.
6:30 would be better for me, yes.
Okay, Daryl?
That works.
Okay, so let's, from here on in until we revisit it, let's start the hearing, the meetings at 6:30. The next item are appointments. Community Preservation Committee, I am currently on that and I've enjoyed it quite a bit and I would like to continue that. Unless there's someone else who wants to wrestle me for it. Well, in some degree, you're, you know, you're in the...
I'm currently on the Affordable Housing Trust already.
Which there's overlap with the Community Preservation Committee.
A little bit, yes.
Well, in the sense that we find, yeah.
Funding, that's where the money comes from.
Yeah, and Bartlet is also part of it, yeah. So, but I'll put it up to discussion. Would anyone else like to be on that committee? Okay. How do we do appointments, Maren, is it a vote or?
It's usually quite informal from this board, anyway.
So I think I would like to continue on that committee. The Transportation Advisor Council, I didn't realize it was called...
Has not met for quite some time.
I know, and I was on that too and I'm aware of the...
They met just a month ago. They meet about every two months.
Well, but they did, did...
Didn't he resign?
Yeah, Michael resigned. There seems to be, I don't know, Mark, you may know more about it than I do, but there seems to be, well, the selectmen would have to appoint a new chairman. Or someone, it was Gary La Croix and then it was Michael took over.
There's vacancies for the select board to appoint and no one's applied.
No one's applied. So... What do we think? Do we appoint? I mean, I can continue on that also. But for instance, the last meeting was that there was a conflict with some other committee that I had to, I had to be on. Is there anyone interested in those issues that would like to be, to consider that committee?
They usually meet on a Tuesday around 5:00 o'clock.
And it's, it's always been Zoom.
So I think from the standpoint of, especially with Daryl being new to the board, typically we each take on another kind of liaison role to these committees and sometimes it's been more than one and then we report back to this board with any updates and any related type of...
So, over the past year, we had quite a bit of activity with generating reports for the state for grant purposes. We had the bicycle, we had the, you know, a bicycle and pedestrian study. We had a park and rec study, which all, which we had representatives of the Planning Board on those things. I'm not aware of that, that cycle is over?
We're, yeah, coming into the end of it with the finishing up of the hazard mitigation plan.
The hazard mitigation, which we had a presentation on. So, so, help me out. We're talking about Transportation Advisor Committee. What other committees do we have appointments on?
Well, the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Right.
I'm not aware of how active they've been recently.
Right.
We're in the cycle now where it's been several years since the master plan was adopted. They did a really big update that was published last year for where the town stood on implementing the master plan. And we're starting to look ahead to, you know, the next update to the master plan in a handful of years.
So, any, any other committees we appoint to?
Not that this board appoints to, but often if there are select board appointments that you're interested in sitting on other committees, then you're sure you're headed along through that process.
So, anyone interested in Transportation Advisory? Now, from my experience, George?
Chairman George Shannon, 672 Green Door. I think maybe you probably should hold off because the select board is going to have to do some... There's 18 names on that committee, which is far more than any committee that we have. And I was talking to the clerk and they need to reback that. That's a problem with that committee as a whole, but because of the large number of members you need to get a quong, we're always running into a problem with it. And that's the problem that we have with that committee. For me, I don't think it should be more than five people there because normally three people show up.
Yeah. My experience was that there was not a huge number of people. There are, as I recall, the committee was set up as a sort of dissemination of information committee, you know? So, we occasionally had the highway department there, you know, they occasionally discussed state highway issues. But, we have a selectman here, what do you think, Mark?
So, they're trying to make the Transportation Advisor Committee have more targeted focused goals, like whether or not, one idea is whether or not the highways through the center of town should be state roads or town roads and what that would mean, or, you know, pursuing sidewalks and what that would take in more places. So, I think the committee needs to get a little more focused, but we haven't actually met to talk about that since the chair resigned, so.
Okay, so, how do we feel about waiting?
My opinion on that is, I have the committees there, is I prefer the select board to make a new charge for that committee and then we appoint when that new charge is made.
I have no problem with that. Anyone else have a problem with that? Master Plan Implementation Committee, I should know more about it because my wife was, I think she authored that report that you just talked about. I don't know, I don't know anything else about it. I mean, did we have a, she kept on asking me questions, but we didn't, did we have an official appointment to that committee? And if so, who wasn't?
Way back, Anna was on it, I was on it.
It was Delisa.
Oh, it was Delisa, okay.
And I was on it before Delisa.
Yeah, okay. So, is there anyone interested in that effort?
How frequently do they meet and when?
I don't think they meet much at all.
I think one of the things that alluded to is the timing for the next master plan is going to be coming up fairly soon and so from the standpoint, I think, of getting ready up for what that'll look like, could be a charge of the impact. Just putting it out there.
Yeah, but we're still a couple of years away from that.
Yeah. But kind of winding down this one and figuring out what the next one would be like.
So to answer you, Daryl, it's not a huge time. I don't even know who, who's the chairman now. I mean, I don't think it's still Laura. Okay, well, it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
We'll hold off on that one.
Yeah, we'll hold off on that one too. And we'll, okay.
So right now Bartlet's on CPC, I'm on Affordable Housing Trust and that's it.
I'm on CPC.
Oh, and you're at CPC too?
Yeah.
You're on CPC through another board, though, right?
So we have a lot of representation on the CPC.
Mr. Chair, before we move forward, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Of our new member, Mr. Baker, who is now Mr. Clerk. Would you like to sit here so that the officers are up here? Okay, well, I just thought I'd put that out there. Happy to switch you, switch with you.
Okay, so, board business, minutes of prior meetings. Has, does anyone have any comments, corrections about the May 2nd meeting? Or the May 2nd minutes? And we have minutes for the town meeting?
We had posted a planning board meeting and there was some planning board discussions, so, yeah.
Okay. Any comments? Would anyone like to move that we accept those minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes of May 2nd and May 7th.
I'll second that.
Okay. Let's take a vote. All in favor of accepting the minutes of May 2nd and May 7th? Please say aye.
Aye.
We've accepted all of them.
You're not missing much.
So, you know, bringing up town meeting, I want to say congratulations to everyone for the effort that we made over the spring to get the MBTA Communities zoning approved. Maren tells me that for the fall town meeting, we will have some kind of housekeeping. Could you explain what we have to do for that?
Yeah, we noticed a numbering error and so we'll have to remember.
And at the same time, we are waiting for the state to weigh in their...
Right, when we hear back from HLC, given the number of comments they've made for some communities, I guess I wouldn't be surprised if we have some comments, but we'll wait and address those. There'll be, the timeline works, so there will be time to address those if necessary.
Next item are bills, are there any bills?
There are. Peer review bills, bills for minutes associates for the MBTA Communities work. And if you just pass the whole folder.
I'm curious if Emily is working with any communities that are still working with the MBTA.
So, by this date, most of the communities that had spring town meetings scheduled, they're done with those. Some communities will be taking it up at fall town meetings.
As we pass along the bills, member input, member, member update on projects. Northern Bank, I gave a report, I was poking around, Subway is gone, it's empty. That site is now vacant. Don't know, I don't know anything more than that. I'm noticing more and more cars parked in Hager Homestead. Have we had more closings for that, or?
No.
Now in the building of the flats, part of the building.
Right.
They've started the firing procedure.
Right, they have, they have announced the lottery process for the two, for the 60% and the 80% AMI units. They started advertising already for that. They did share that information with the town and we posted that to the website and went out with the news. So SEB Housing is the lottery agent for that and so questions go to them.
12 Robinson is proceeding a pace and they're putting, he was, they were planning on putting the roof back on of the barn today, but didn't quite make that, but that's next in line. Anyway, and does anyone else have any comments on any other updates on projects?
I do.
Okay.
So for the Affordable Housing Trust, we received one response to the RFP that went out for Tahadwon Road and so we'll be discussing that at our June 25th meeting. Also, the trust and CPC will have a quick joint meeting on June 25th, which is a meeting that was moved from the original date of June 18th. And we're going to review the agreement. We got it back from town council, I think today or yesterday. Some minor edits, it goes back to an older agreement that had been tossed around a little bit. So, we got that all settled up. And that's an agreement that needs to be signed for when funds are transferred from CPC to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Could you remind everyone what the Tahadwon project entails?
Yeah, so that is going to be a, the intention is to have a duplex built and so the intended homeowners will participate in the building if Habitat for Humanity is approved as the developer, builder for that. And the thought is to have one two-bedroom unit and one three-bedroom unit, but as a duplex.
Okay. And this, just so people, as I understand it, this is a site that was made available when we acquired the Brown property, okay?
Correct, correct.
The grants that the town got, when the town purchased the Brownswood site was a stronger grant because Affordable Housing Trust was interested in part of the parcel for affordable housing and actually did some of the local match by purchasing the lot that's being developed.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I have about five items. So, I'm going to put this up here for everyone to see at home and then I'll just pass it around. So, many boards and committees are being asked to share this invitation, so I'm sharing it with our board. And for the viewing audience, this is an invitation to the Littleton Senior Follies, which is going to be held on Sunday, July 7th, 2:00 to 4:30 in the high school auditorium. So, apparently the Follies was something that was done years ago.
I know Laura has gone to a Follies before.
Yeah, so they're going to be doing a screening of those. So that was something else. I did want to ask, is the planning department submitting something for the July newsletter?
I don't even know what the July newsletter is.
So, the town administrator has been collecting snippets of activity for the newsletter. The first edition was in June. You were traveling, so you may not have noticed.
I may not have noticed it anyway. So where, so where does it come, how does it come into our...
So, Maren, would you like to talk more about that?
Sign up on the website for new notifications. It just comes with the news, as a news flash.
Okay, well, that seems interesting.
Yeah.
Since we don't have to even pay to...
So some of, some of the trustees put some language together, so that's going to be in the July edition. So the deadlines are the 15th of the month in order to publish for the upcoming month. And so it's just like a update on projects, anything at all that we would want to talk about. So I think it's a good opportunity for us to share out to the community what's going on.
Okay. I guess we'll...
We can send you the edition that was sent out.
Oh, I'll, I'll sign up for it and we'll see what. I get from another town that owns property and I get something similar and it's very chatty and, you know, but it is, does have information.
Yeah, this one had a lot of input from the departments as well as, I think, maybe just one or two committees, so.
Well, you think we, you think we should?
I think it's a good idea, even if it's just a couple of paragraphs to update. So for example, the, the, the projects that we list, you know, Northern Bank, Hager, MBTA, King Street and 12 Robinson Road, those are the ones that we're focused on the most right now. So even if we do a quick...
Can we submit photos? Because, you know, 12 Robinson is becoming sort of interesting. That a lot of different committees had, you know, had made that happen. Select Board, Historical Commission.
Yeah, everybody loves pictures.
Yeah.
You could probably even put links to videos, you know, all that kind of stuff. I think that town administrator, Duggan, is pretty open to most things that we would think about.
So why don't we just leave it that if we do something that's of interest to the town and we should make sure that, send a blurb over to Mr. Duggan's office so that it can be in the newsletter?
Well, interestingly, he actually made the ask of all the chairs of the committees. And now that Mr. Yates is the chair...
He did ask, I didn't want to step on Jeff's toes.
I'm sure that's...
My toes are banged up already, you could step.
So I wanted to mention that.
Okay, well, I think, yeah, I can see the planning staff groaning over there going, "One more thing." So I think it's going to be up to individual members to highlight what they're thinking about or interested in communicating, so.
I see my heart shaking, I had, yes.
That would be most helpful.
Yeah, well, I mean, maybe, it may be, you know, and then if it's nothing, then we have to, you know, get a little more forceful. But, you know, I'm thinking, you know, if I'm, I'm around, I can, if, when the big roof is put back onto the barn, you know, they have a huge crane, it's sort of interesting if I, you know, if I can get...
Great, you go, Jeff.
Go with, go.
I mean, it's the kind of situation that had we had that newsletter six months ago, there could have been more about the whole MBTA project.
What's the uptake from townspeople in terms of getting it?
We'd have to ask Mr. Duggan that question, I don't know.
Okay, I mean, is it like 12 people or...
Last session or last issue was the first one, so.
Okay. Who, and then is it's his office the one that's putting it together?
Well, it's, it's a very simple submission process. You submit things to a link and then IT department puts it together to publish. And it's published electronically.
So, chairs are only asked to provide the content?
So, are meetings going back to the first Thursday of the month, is that what?
So, thanks for asking.
You do have a schedule.
We did the schedule and it's a good question. So Thursday, July 11th, Thursday, August 1st, Thursday, September 12th, Thursday, October 3rd are the dates that we had suggested.
And the reason I asked is, when I was chair, I was asked if we wanted to participate in the third Thursday, have a booth there to be a third Thursday so people could come up and ask us questions.
Yeah, the one really strong success with that was when the Master Plan Update Steering Committee members had a local survey that they wanted, like two or three questions. And they had a table and went through that exercise. And they manned the booth and got a lot of good feedback. They were able to share where they were in the master plan process at that point. So when there's something focused like that, that worked well.
Okay. Tonight is Third Thursday, which we obviously missed.
So, could we add an item on the board business agendas about this newsletter? You know, just to assess what the board's interest would be. I mean, we get so many complaints about it, I never heard about this, I never, you know. I don't know if this is going to be any better, but it would be, you know, redirect people to the town website, which doesn't seem to do anything.
This is just the rehash of the website, really.
Well, except that it, yeah, it's less dry.
It's in a much shorter format.
Yeah.
Digestible format.
So the next question is, well, I don't know if it's this meeting, but I'm curious about how they're going to, you know, gatekeep the submissions or, you know, I mean... Anyway, could go off the rails.
Best laid plans, nice in that.
Okay, next, so anyone else, you have more?
You only had three of your five, I think. So, I think, one of the things that I was thinking about, because it's back to finding the information. It's not that it's not technically there, you wrote through all the minutes and all of the things there. But I was thinking, you know, it might be worthwhile and I might try to take the first crack at it of, is there, putting together some kind of like overall sort of master schedule of all of the projects that are rolling, when they're expected to start, when they're expected to end, and any of the major milestones on it? Because you get questions all the time, like, how much longer is this sewer construction going to go on? When's this project going to come online? When's this project expected to come online? Recognizing schedules change, but having something that maybe just gave an overall picture of all of the activities and when... picture of all of the activities and when they're going to hit might be something that would be useful, both for information as well as if, planning in terms of when a bunch of activity is expected.
So that was the idea behind member input and update, which has been sort of informal. For instance, the sewer, did anyone, they had a meeting while I was away, did anyone go, "Did we get any updates, Mark, are you up?"
There isn't much of enough data.
Okay. That's a, that's a good point, because we get, but for instance, we don't know when Northern Bank is going to start. They're not, they're not in, you know, there's no public...
We can say that.
We have, we have, we do have, especially included in the conditions for 550 King, we do have a schedule for that. They have a very detailed which parcel is going to be built in, but we know that that's, you know, whether it'll be adhered to. So there is, you know, there is some info. Darrell, please, if you want to...
I'm going to look at it. I haven't figured out what it might look like yet.
But it may just be this, you know, member input section of the meeting, just update, like for instance, Hager-Homestead. We have an interest in, you know, knowing how that turns out. In fact, I don't know, I would love to get a little tour, but I don't know even who you would, you know, they're probably so rung out by this whole process that I don't know if that could happen. I mean, it's a very unique project.
It's our first senior housing that we really...
Yeah, and in particular, work very hard for the affordability component. And, you know, as it comes to completion, it would be nice, you know, to acknowledge that and just say, "This is what happened." So anyway, yes, please.
It's something I'm going to think about.
Yeah, and, and, and let's put it on the agenda for, in some way, well, we'll do maybe with the member.
Member.
Or, you know, we'll bring it up and see if you have any further thoughts, so.
Good luck.
So the other two items for future discussion would be a retreat. We haven't had one in a couple of years in terms of, you know, big-ticket items, so to speak, that might be important to discuss. And then the other one is signing of a code of conduct.
So what is, is there a townwide code of contact, conduct? Is this applying to us? How does this work?
So there is no townwide code of conduct. There is the code of conduct that the select board adopted and I believe has been working on some amendments too. I would suggest if you're looking for one, to start with the one that they have created for their use.
Well, I don't think we need to go further than that, unless there's some aspect of it that does it work for us. Can we put that on under Board Business for next meeting? What's, what is the status of your, the selectmen's work on that?
The select board approved, we re-gratified the code of conduct at our first meeting after the elections. You'll need to slightly adopt it for your purposes, because it, you know, we talked about our interaction with the town administrator, and I talked about your interaction with the planning staff instead, so.
Okay. So, Mar, could you give us a copy of that?
Yep.
What next? Oh, retreat, yeah. I, I don't know, we've had these, we've had the occasional dinner, which was sort of a substitute. What, what are you, what are you thinking about?
So I'm thinking about it from the perspective of how much the planning department has evolved and what we would like to be able to see maybe from the planning department, since Cooper has been on board now for eight months?
Seven.
Seven, there you go.
Exactly.
Feels like eight.
But things that I know have been raised in the past, but because of having too much work, you know, what can now be done differently, whether it's ensuring timeliness of applicants bringing their applications to us, or other processes that we are involved in. For example, our own policies as to how we take a look at applications and the process we follow for decision-making. I think the last time we approved an update or draft of our policies was six years ago, when I started in 2018, so taking a look at those policies, so things like that.
Okay. By the way, I was gratified that we didn't have any last-minute drawings this week. Kept on looking at my email to see what was coming in.
Right, and that's the kind of thing we don't want to have, right? So...
Of course. And then the other thing that I can think of is, for a brief time, you did these action sheets, or what did you call them? I would love to see that again.
Right, exactly. So having those discussions about what we'd like to see, because we don't have time in these meetings to really get into those kinds of discussions.
Yeah, okay. How do we want to go about this in terms of...
When do we want to go about it?
What, what do you, you know, are we talking about, you know, like two hours with the lunch, or?
Yeah, that kind of thing, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's doable.
Okay. And we want to accomplish it over the summer? Do we, are, are we all going to be here for the, you know...
Well, knowing that once September hits, it's pretty busy, September and October, so if at all possible, have a...
Well, and we were thinking that the summer's so far looking pretty, you know, pretty like compared to the spring.
Yeah.
So, uh, well, how, any comments about this idea? Any comments about when we should do this? It could theoretically be on, I don't know, Thursday evening, it could be, which, you know, evening is probably going to be, I hate to eat into people's weekends, evening is probably going to be the most, you know, humane.
Yeah, I can do evening, or, you know, if I know it far enough in advance, I can do lunch as well.
Yeah. Okay. What?
What about a, a meeting in July or August that we're not going to be that busy? Stay an extra hour afterwards and have it after our meeting.
Okay, or do it before and bring in some food or something.
Yeah, something like that.
So the next meeting is July 11.
11. Do we have a lot on it?
Well, depending on your schedule, if you vote to schedule the public hearing on the marijuana bylaw update, that would be. And then I have not heard of any new applications, any new big applications coming in.
So could we do it at 5:00 and, for an hour and a half, and...
Yeah, seems reasonable.
Why don't we do it at 6:00 and schedule everything else after at 7:00? Is that too late? Well, I don't care, 5:00 is fine. I mean, I can, I can read the...
What do we think?
Some people still have jobs, so they might use 5:00 to get 8:00.
I, you're hitting my hot button with people who act like we don't have jobs and, you know, we're just, anyway.
Be idle rich.
What do we think?
Yeah, I like that idea.
What date were you thinking about?
11.
July 11.
Because that's our next meeting.
Yeah, and just meet early. Among us have, you know, we can even be outside, have, well, this is, it has to be a posted meeting, okay, whatever.
You could be outside in the courtyard.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, and we can at least, and then if we come prepared with what we want to see, so we can get something out of this meeting, you know, there are issues, obviously the staff, and, anyway. So, put it in your calendars, 5:00. And so how would you post that? Do you just say 5:00?
Well, board retreat, 5:00 until 6:30 or whatever time you start the regular meeting. And then at the posted, at the time where it's, you've got regular board business, then that's when LCTV would start.
Okay.
So it will be an open meeting, but it won't be televised?
Correct.
I mean, that means George can come, but he won't be on television.
Well, hopefully we wouldn't order him dinner, but...
No, okay. Speaking of which, what are we going to do? Let's do something different than a formal, not that a formal isn't very good.
That was kind of the standard for a few years, wasn't it? It was very good. I'm happy to take suggestions and...
I, I, whatever, whatever people want.
We can, those kinds of details are...
Actually, you could do whatever you want.
Yeah, you do whatever, I'm just kidding, I don't care.
So, hold on one second.
Don't worry, Mar, I'll send you an update.
Now, we're at the...
Public input.
The public input. George.
First, I want to say that I'm very pleased that citizens here in Littleton passed that MBTA situation for Littleton and keep us on course with the state and being in good hands with them for us giving grants and so forth. Talking about the newsletter, I spoke at the select board meeting and I mentioned to the town administrator that I thought that they could have a few of those letters at places where a lot of citizens sort of kind of comes in, and that would be at the town clerk office and also EHS, and I forgot to add the library as a place. And I think they could print down maybe 20, and when they get low, they could go back and print some more of that and just have that available for people. And I think that's one way that we can get the word out about this newsletter, because right now, everybody do not have a computer to get online to see what's going on there. Other comment that I had here was with regard to the sewer. I stay in contact with Nick and I advocate for the town of Littleton all the time about monies for grants and so forth and so on, so I've sent letters to Jim Mascherio with regards to putting money available, because they just passed that bond just a few days ago in the House. I think 150, 60, 0, and it's now over in the Senate House there. And I, I would like to point out that it's probably going to be some time before Northern Bank do anything in this town, because one, they have to get more discharge sites. Right now it's 243,000 gallons, that's already committed. And Nick says that he should be able to do the common area with 60,000. So they got a spot up at the high school up there, they're developing, and hopefully that EPA is going to let him approve that site up there. But they got to pump water up there for X number of days to show them on the perking of that particular area up there. So he told me roughly, we're looking at about 18 months before the plant is going to be finished. So we know it's 18 months out before anything's going to start happening up there, and if the, if, they got the data back, consultants of the places that they have, that all they got to do now is look into what area that they're wanting to work with on that. So the sewer is coming along. I asked Mr. Jim Mascherio to earmark some money for the discharge site from that plant, because right now, we don't have to increase the plant to increase the production there. We need land to put the clean water into. So that's what the light and water there is looking at, is trying to find more areas that they can put that clean water into. So I told Jim, when we do find land that we can use that meets the DEP specs, we need the money to buy. So I told him that you need to put some of that money that we got in there. Now I understand that the Speaker of the House, according to Jim, which I'm going to be meeting with him on the 28th of this month, to bring me up to date with everything that's going on, that he is pushing for sewer and water out of that bond that was passed. So that's a big plus in the sense there. So I told him, try to earmark some money in there for the housing area, because what if they put a building down there near the rail, the train station, plus whatever, have the 550 up here? I says, you know, you're still going to need a place to discharge. In order to discharge, right now, we are committed with the high school. That's the only place we have to discharge right now. So we got to find more before we can increase the production at the plant and to take on the common area. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Mark, any, okay. Item three, board discussion zoning bylaw amendment, amend Article 27, registered marijuana dispensaries and Article 28, adult-use marijuana establishments to limit the number of marijuana cultivation special permits. We, tonight, we are scheduled to schedule a public hearing on this issue. This that was in our packet is the actual...
So what I had provided was a lot of backup and the cover to try to find a format that we can start working with for, you know, outlining what information I'm providing, the staff is providing to you and what the request is for the board action. So that was, that was this cover.
This is pretty daunting. I mean, it, as I understand it, part of this effort is to bring our bylaw in compliance with the latest CCC ideas. The other issue is seeking to limit cultivation sites in town.
Right, and the last discussion that the board had, it was kind of broad, and I wanted to make sure that I understood that it was the whole board's wish to move forward with these three different goals, well, these three goals combined on the update.
So ensure the three goals.
Okay, one, to delete the outdated registered, the medical marijuana piece, roll the important parts of that into the adult-use marijuana establishment zoning bylaw, and update, second thing to update that bylaw to meet current standards, and the third, to limit the number of marijuana grow facilities. Because that's, was everybody's understanding of what the board had asked for, and that's what's drafted in the packet.
So Darrell, the background is that we have probably spent more time on marijuana-related issues. We've spent an incredible amount of time, and we also have received an incredible amount of complaints about the existing grow facility. So I think the town is interested in such limitations. So I think the town is interested in such limitations. I, I want people to talk about how we get there, because I, this is a lot. And like the MBTA community effort, we have to really just edit, edit, edit from a legalistic point of view down to, you know, what we hope to accomplish.
Right, I think we're starting on a very good point, because we have a strong draft from town council. I'm glad you mention, and I didn't pay you to say it, I'm glad you mentioned the process for adopting, removing the zoning bylaw. That's...
Well, that, that brings up a point. The reason we stopped short of it before was because it was so daunting. Do we really need something that much? Can we just have an understanding with the select board that you need a host community agreement to do this? It's not in the town's interest anymore. We're not getting any added revenue from it. We just don't issue any more host community agreements. We agree amongst ourselves that one is enough. And just stop there. We don't have to reinvent the wheel and have thirty pages of a new bylaw when we can agree amongst ourselves that we have, what we have is what we have, and that's it. We stop there. Because everybody has to go through the select, correct me if I'm wrong, don't they have to get a host community to start? They don't need a host community now to...
No, we don't have to issue host community agreements.
For them to proceed?
Yes.
I thought that was what this whole thing was all about.
No, host community agreements are no longer required. We're issuing them, but they're no longer required. They can still get a special permit and get through the Cannabis Control Commission without a host community agreement.
So I think one of the things that we, we want to consider understanding is why is it that it's not as easy to go in as when we put in the, um, the delivery marijuana, we added two licenses? Why can't we just literally go into the bylaw and say zero or one, or whatever number we wind up deciding on? Why can't we just do that?
Okay, and, um, that's because when you're going to, if you were to try to go to zero, if you were prohibiting, then that would also take a ballot vote, because Littleton was a yes community, so that you're required to...
We're not going to zero. We're going to one.
Well, and that's, that's the discussion.
We're going to one.
Well, no, you'd be going, that's part of the question. If you're going to zero craft growers, then that would require both the zoning plus a ballot vote, because you're prohibiting allowed use under CCC regs.
Would it be terrible to go to a ballot vote?
Um, no, it's just, that's just what the process is.
Mr. Chair, may I pass these out?
Yeah.
I don't know...
Sure.
...why they were distributed to everybody in our packet of stuff. But I think it's important that we all are on the same page to show that there are various types of cultivators in our bylaw. So what I just passed out is a little chart that, and there could be misinformation on here, I don't know. I don't believe there is, but there could be. So under the cultivators, we currently have four different types. There's a cultivation factor in the registered marijuana dispensary, the RMD. Then we have craft marijuana cooperatives in our bylaw. We have the, quote, "traditional cultivator," and then we have microbusiness. So we technically have four types of cultivators. So when we talk about this and we talk about reducing the licenses, in my head, technically, we have two right now, because Sanctuary has one through the RMD, and Sanctuary has one through the traditional cultivator. That's the way I see it. I don't know how others see it.
You don't see it as one license, you see it as two.
Well, look at Maureen's head.
So I think what Iveria is saying, well, what we have to be careful of is, under state law, what's required. And we're required to allow at least one craft marijuana cooperative and at least... I'm not probably going to say it right, but you're comparing it to the local bylaw. The state has, is looking at it according to the CCC regulations about the different types of cultivators.
Okay, so let me start from that standpoint. So these four different types, this, these are the same types as at the state level?
I, I can't say that. I don't know.
Okay, well, that would be one question I would have for Iveria.
Are these different types of businesses defined anywhere?
Um, yeah, the state has definitions for all the types.
But it's not in the bylaw anywhere?
It is in our bylaw.
It is, it is, okay.
And some of the updates to the bylaw will include updating the definitions to better match the state regulations.
So cutting to the chase, rather than discuss this tonight at great length and ad nauseam, we need to just schedule, we need to decide whether we want to go down this route and schedule this. That's what we're really, all we're talking about. We can look at this and everything else, but until we bring Iveria in and we know where we are with the state, in the eyes of the state.
I think it would be a good idea to get, you know, what the questions of the board are, to have, to be prepared for the, for the public hearing. And to understand if, what the, what the parameters are.
Would it be better, well, would it be better to say what the goal is? The goal is to limit, you know, cultivation facilities. That's it. I think we're, you know, our retailer situation is fine. I don't really understand what the microbusiness or craft marijuana cooperative is. We could find, you know, that would be good for a subject of a public hearing, so that anyone who's interested could find out. Otherwise, you know, we have a manufacturer. We, I, we did have this discussion when we approved the delivery licenses, which I found at that point extremely confusing. And that may have changed since then. We have a testing lab, don't know, so one of, one of the goals of a hearing would be to get us to understand, I mean, our goal is, for whatever ever we do, to limit cultivation, the cultivators. But as part of that, to understand, and I doubt we need to have a, you know, granular understanding of it, but to at least, um, understand how, by the way, thank you for this. So our experience, when Iveria came, you know, because we originally were sort of throwing this at the wall to try to do it at the regular town meeting, and we realized, no, with MBTA, we just did not have the bandwidth, nor would the town meeting have the bandwidth. So it is appropriate to try to get it for the special town meeting. Based on the schedules that have been set out, that would have to be submitted by September fourteenth. If we wanted to, maybe not specific, the specific warrant, but we'd have to make a place for it. So the question we would have is, can we get, can we do a hearing, you know, July, August, on this matter and come to a conclusion? Now with, I, I've got to say, it's wonderful to have access to experts, but we need to just tone down the granularity of, you know, putting together a bylaw is something that we're not going to do by committee. We just, but we need to specifically articulate what our goal is. And so is there, are there any other goals besides limiting the cultivation, you know, cult, the further cultivation in town? Or finding out more about this, these other type of businesses? Is there anything else?
I think it could go two different ways. There, one, you could just attack just the specific question, update the language to match the new thing and the cultivation thing here. I haven't dug into what the state requirements and the state model is versus our local piece here, because I'm of the mind of, like, it sounds like ours is more complex than it needs to be in terms of, you know, does the state require you have, to have, it defines them, but does it require you to have them in your law, or your bylaw? And I would be tending more towards revamping if, you know, in terms of overall edits, is to bring it down to the minimum requirements of the state and keep it at the minimum requirements and not have all of the complexity that, if the state doesn't say that you have to have four categories of grow sites, you only have, what they're defined, then we should, my opinion is that we should simplify our bylaws and eliminate all of that complexity there for it. Because I think the intent is, is we want to limit the number of grow sites, whether they're micros, cultivators, or craft here on it. Or there's a good reason that these still exist in our bylaw to as categories.
Well, I think what we'll find when we are up against an attorney who specializes in this, it's unlikely that we're going to get a smooth, streamlined... And I guess the, the theory is that if you don't mention it, then you're leaving yourself open. Anyway, I don't know. The other, the other thing, we're, we're dealing with an existing bylaw, which, um, well, I don't know. Let's schedule, let's, who's interested in scheduling a hearing for next meeting?
I think we have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's going to take a while to do this, and, and, you know, I, I would like some background information on what the, what the state requirements are for the zone, for the bylaws.
Can I entertain a motion to schedule a hearing?
Yes.
Okay, I move that we schedule a hearing. What time do you want to, we're starting at six thirty. We also are having our little retreat, so what time would you want to schedule this for?
I suggested if we do board business at six thirty, do this at seven.
Okay.
Would leave you time for as long a discussion as you care about.
So we will post a public hearing on this matter?
Right, and the benefit of scheduling it sooner than later is that the, once the hearing notice hits the newspaper, then any new potential application would be under the new bylaw when it, when it passes.
So, next question. Can Iveria be here?
I will.
Okay.
Make sure, I will ask her if she's not available to have something else as well first. And then as she's reviewing the draft warrant article, she's working to meet all of the goals that, you know, were set out on the front here to limit the number in a manner, in kind of a stepwise manner. Town meeting would vote the first part of the article to reduce the number of cultivators, and then if... Anyway, she'll, she'll walk you through that. But then in, in the second part of the article, she would reduce the number again to zero for the craft cooperatives, which is pretty much the, and she did tell us that the microbusiness was not a separate type of cultivator. So, sorry, I digress there.
Okay, well, we'll find out more from her at the hearing.
And if I may ask another question, again, it's very basic. How many cultivation licenses do we currently have? Is it two? And Sanctuary holds both of those, or is it just one? I think that's, that's good for us to know.
Well, there, there are two that the board issued.
Well, the first one, that's, that's the medical license. Would that still be valid after we get rid of the medical bylaw?
It's not, we're not getting rid of it. It's consolidating it.
Right, they would still, would still be allowed to grow in that facility for both medical and recreational. Correct.
But it would essentially be the same cultivator, the current licenses. Okay.
Correct, and then the only detail that would need to go to ballot vote is whether or not the town wishes to eliminate craft grow facility.
Which we don't even really know what that is, so, okay. Okay, so can I have a vote? Do we need to have a vote?
No, we're good.
Okay, so we're scheduled. Okay. Next item is the board discussion request for Air Sewer Service Agreement for two fifty-four to two sixty-Air Road. This mainly has to do with land use implications, and as you recall, we approved the project at the site of the existing gas station at the corner of Bruce and Air Road. And it will be a larger site. It will be, anyway, it's approved, and it was approved with the Septic System. They've now come, and they would like to connect to the Air Sewer system, which has apparently plenty of capacity. And they will be entering into an agreement with the Board of Selectmen for this, and we would like to weigh in on whether that's a good idea or not. We can do this in a couple ways. We can do it, well, we should consider a couple things. This specific project connection and what that means for other properties in the area, should they want to connect to the Air Sewer. So I will, and this is not a hearing, it's just a discussion.
So I was able to pull up the map that DPW Director in AIR sent. So looking at the AIR parcels, this is AIR, AIR Road intersection with Willow over there and Bruce over here. The development for the, what is the combination of Hafners and the convenience store and with the pizza.
So it's essentially this...
It's all, all of those three parcels, this existing station, the insurance building in the back, and the open area here, that's all being redeveloped as the new service station plaza. Existing town sewer in AIR, this is the, where it ends at the moment. They're proposing an extension down Willow Road and across a part of this parcel. The owner over here is working, is paying for part of that extension, and then the request is to the Littleton Select Board to sign a, an agreement to allow the extension to, of AIR Town Sewer for this combined site here. So...
It's unfortunate we don't have the actual town lines.
That's it.
That's the line right there.
Which is the, oh, where?
Right there.
Yeah, I was trying to, that's where I was trying to...
We're looking at AIR, AIR G I S.
So Chipshots is in AIR?
No.
Oh, Chipshots is there, and that's the building behind it. Okay. So the question is, should this connection be established? Would that encourage Littleton property owners to look to AIR to provide sewer, which would then affect their, the development potential of their properties? The campground, you know, Chipshots.
Trailer park beyond there?
You know, the Matheson property, the trailer, the trailer park is nearby, so...
The campground?
Yeah, the campground's here. So let's talk about it. What do we think?
Right, so each parcel, each property that would want to connect to AIR Sewer would need to go through the same process as this one. Town meeting in AIR plus MOU between Littleton Select Board and Town of AIR. So the MOU is specific to this parcel. Anyone that would want to add to it would go through the same process. AIR Town Meeting plus Select Board agreement with Littleton to add additional parcels.
Do we know if they have permission to go, who owns Willow Road? Is that state or is that Town of AIR?
That's, that's AIR, Town of AIR Road. They would need the massed up permission to cross.
Right there.
They're, they're, they're working on it right now. I mean, Willow Road is closed.
That was one of the things I wanted to just make sure, that all of the construction on Willow Road is in AIR. None of, none of that would need to cross into Littleton. The only crossing into Littleton is crossing AIR Road, which is a state road.
Right.
That's the only road impact in, in, in that case there. That's the only road impact in, in that case there, of which, you know, clearly they're aware they need state approval also in order to do anything in the road.
The group that's doing the Hafners is very, they were great to deal with and they're very sophisticated. So if they, they have the capability of pushing, you know, pushing this along if, if they could get permission. So.
To that point, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Maren, do you know if there are any new players? Because I think I read somewhere in here about the new owners. So are there new owners?
The new owners was the Energy North Group that purchased.
Okay, so they are the new owners. Okay, got it.
They're already working closely with the, with the highway people because they're coordinating drainage and, you know, land changes.
So the further issue is a water department hydrology issue, which you institute septic, you know, sewer systems, you remove groundwater that would otherwise be percolating into the aquifer. And it's a good and a bad thing. So, but there are implications. We have a town water source, which is in a park from here. And as I understand it, the water department to this point has just said, well, yeah, it's a, you know, it's something to think about and they haven't had a.
Not looking at a lot.
No, that, that's the thing about the specific proposal. Number one, it's designed with a septic system and was approved with a septic system. The main, I, I see the main thing is setting a precedent for this part of town.
Yeah. I don't understand why they want to do it, honestly. I mean, if they are just doing it for a few bathrooms, I could see if they had like a car wash or something over there, that that would make sense, but that's not part of their plan. So I'm just confused about why they would want to go through this expense.
Well, it's probably not a lot of expense to them, but somebody else is paying the freight to get it all the way down there. They're just really paying to connect across.
Like I read that they had to pay for the whole.
The whole, all the way down?
But they don't have to pay for a septic system.
Yeah, but that's only a couple hundred thousand at the most. You bring in town sewer lines to, to a road, that's.
Okay. I mean, that's their business, but our business is what we think about it.
So, I mean, I have an opinion, I'm not gonna be afraid to start expressing them there, is, is I, you know, I'm not in favor of us using other reasons to limit somebody's development, like the septic reasons or the water, you know, wells versus town water as a reason not to let somebody develop a property. Private sewer versus town sewer. Again, those are artificial constraints on allowing somebody to develop their property and I'm not necessarily in favor of that there. If there, I would be looking for, why wouldn't we be approving this? Because what's the downside of us approving this? And if you say it's development, those people are entitled to develop those lots anyway there. And is, in the grand scheme, is having them connected to a public sewer better than multiple private sewers or a small treatment plant like we're getting? Every housing development is starting to put in their own treatment plant since there's three of them down by my house at this point.
So it's, I, I hear your point. It's not an artificial constraint though, it's an actual constraint. And I, this is a particular case where we've already approved it, it's already been designed with a septic system and we, on that basis, we can say, okay, yeah, they want to connect, you know, to AIR, that's fine. And I, I don't think we have any authority over this. It's, it's the selectmen that are, we're, we're just asked to weigh in. And I do think it's fair to assess, you know, the overall hydrology issues. And it's, I think it's fair to assess, you know, how it might affect other land use. I mean, it just is.
Well, the hydrology is, is a, is a, you know, is a reason in terms of not, you know, I understand the differences in terms of exporting.
And once again, this system is so small, I can't think, but if, for instance, there was a big, you know, it's, anyway, this, this is a particular issue, I mean, a particular act, we're, we're weighing in on this specific proposal, but in doing so, we need to sort of embrace the whole picture.
We're opening up a can of worms we're not sure we want to open is the better way to put it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The potential to, and you gotta understand, zoning is gonna drive it more than anything else. Just because there's sewer there, they don't have the zoning to.
Right.
To do anything.
And then the other issue is, you know, we can just ask the selectmen to, in their decision, to emphasize that this is a specific, this somehow limit the future use of this.
Well, I think you hit on the head because you already have an approved septic system.
You know, it's the same principle in approving, you know, subdivisions and, you know, you, you test it out and then you can do something different in this case. But Maren, Maren said that AIR actually has 1.8 million gallons capacity, you know, whereas we're at 2.30 or.
Because they're dumping it in the river, we're not.
Yeah. So, oh, is that what they do? They, they pre-treat it and then they don't have to have a leach field?
Why don't we dump it in Long Lake? We'll make the lake.
Why don't we, why don't we pump it to AIR?
Yeah.
Anyway.
Did you have a comment?
Well, I, I think that you're right, that we have to think, I mean, hydrology is one thing, but I think we also have to really consider the precedent and, and if we allow this to go in, and there's a precedent for other lots and basically that's a windfall for the, the increase in property value is something that the landowners don't at this point have any reason to expect that kind of increase. So I don't think that's an issue.
So what I'm hearing you saying is that they already have a septic system approved, just let them build a septic system and let's not.
Right.
So I, I found the letter back from Mr. Skalcwick, just a bit confusing. On the map, there's a yellow part, the yellow dashes that says potential future sewer services and one of them is to lot number 64.
Which is behind Chipshots.
Which is behind Chipshots. Okay. And then on the backside, they say the intent and authorization from AIR Town Meeting is to allow connection of the gas station and no further connections from out of town. So that's where I'm just confused because they're saying their town only approved this connection and no others, but yet the map shows potential future, so.
Right, no.
Out of town connections.
Out of town connections.
Okay.
Have to, have to be approved by Town Meeting and they did so. In-town connections don't have to be approved.
Those are wrong.
Okay, so that, so the most important thing I wanted to ask is that yellow line, was that to an AIR property or?
Yes.
Okay, then, then, okay, that makes sense. So I think if that is their intention to be the good guys and allow this gas station, then, then I think that defines it and we just need to support that if that's what we choose to do. What I'm hearing colleagues saying is we should just tell AIR that, you know, we'd rather they just stay as is with a septic system.
I'm wondering if there isn't a distinction to be made between allowing for commercial use and allowing for residential use? Is that what I'm hearing or not?
That's a good distinction. We couch it on the fact that this is a commercial property and allow commercial connection to it, because that's the only parcel right there. So if we're worried about future, we've only allowed a commercial property that has an approved septic system, this is better technology, we could, we could argue it that way, that we're allowing a commercial use of this.
Could we, I, I hesitate to make that distinction.
It's certainly, definitely a land use distinction. My hesitation was because we haven't had the opportunity to do any outreach and planning studies about what the town would like to see overall in this area. We have an approved site, it should move forward, but what is the town interested in having this, you know, the whole area look like in, in 20 to 50 years? And without that, I would hate to provide sort of any idea that it would be okay to just sewer the whole thing to AIR.
Well, going back to the master plan, that is now, you know, X number of years old, there was no intention to, you know, develop this area in any way from that master plan. Doesn't mean that in the future master plan, there wouldn't be some information in there.
I, you know, the other option is to do nothing because they have an approved septic and if, you know, if the select board wants to allow this, I don't, I don't see why. It is a windfall to the owner, maybe, who knows? I don't know what, you know, that whole area is torn up.
I think it's a windfall. He's not gonna have a lot of capacity as they are. He's getting town sewer instead of building a septic system of his own. I'd still like Maren's idea. If we're, if we're going to go down this road, let's go down very slowly and say, this is a commercial renovation. From a commercial standpoint, we'll allow, we, we see no problem with this and just weigh in that way and leave it as a commercial.
And I would point out, a commercial property with an previously approved.
With an approved septic system, yes. Send it to the selectmen that way, that we have no problem. If a commercial developer on the AIR Littleton line wants to tie in their business there, we're okay with that. Just leave it at that. So we're not addressing the residential, which is the side.
In terms of, you know, so I agree. In terms of the, you know, the future master planning, the, the main thing in this area of town is the trailer park, which is an incredible resource for affordable housing that we get no, you know, there's, it's not in the S H I, it's not, you know, we, we get no credit for that. And yet, how many, you know, there's 100?
There's 110 units, I think.
Very valuable to the town.
Very valuable if bringing sewer there from AIR, you know, made that, you know, anyway, that's why planning is, you know, part of the deal. But anyway, so we, okay.
But I, I still think you need to separate the discussion there because by right, what can they build at the trailer park? It doesn't have to be trailers.
Oh, no, no, no.
So you can't, you can't assume, you know, that you're.
No, no, no. I guess, I guess I'm saying that just from a planning point of view, there are vital planning interests in that part of town. It's not just the Mathesons' field and, you know, Chipshots and that's all. So what did we come up with?
A split board.
We're not enthusiastic, but given that it's, well, I guess I would say it's a previously, an approved project with an approved septic, we don't understand the purpose of connecting to AIR and we are hesitant about opening that way of developing property in that part of town.
Is there anyone here this evening from the project, from the Hafner project? No?
No, this presentation came, this request came from the Town of AIR.
Okay.
And the other, my only recommendation, well, select board knows this already, is just to rely, also rely on input from L E L W D on, on the issue, as the water and sewer boards, well, departments.
Okay. Okay. Next. Public hearing, 95 Taylor Street Scenic Road Review, street tree removal, Strawberry Farms.
So, we have a hearing notice for the scenic road review. Town of Littleton Planning Board and Tree Warden will hold a joint public hearing.
Maren, would you like our new clerk to read it?
Can you read it from there?
You were doing an excellent job, so I'm, I'm okay, but I don't feel infringed upon.
I'm just so proud of myself for finding it and putting it up there. Town of Littleton Planning Board and Tree Warden will hold a joint public hearing on Thursday, June 13th, 2024 at 7:00 PM in room 103 of the Shattuck Street Town Offices to consider a scenic road review in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15C, and the Code of the Town of Littleton Scenic Road Bylaw, Chapter 143. Property location is Strawberry Farms Definitive Subdivision at 95 Taylor Street, map U40, parcel eight. Applicant and owner, Seal Harbors Company LLC and by Lane and T. Fryberg. Property owner seeking review under the scenic road bylaw to allow removal up to three street trees to allow access for construction of a new definitive subdivision. Goes on to tell you where you can find the plans and where you can provide comments.
Do you have Seal Harbor here?
We have the Tree Warden here.
And the Tree Warden?
And, well.
Oh, great. I didn't know we had a Tree Warden and it's nice to have your attendance. Thank you.
And from the Tree Warden, we do have a letter that came in today.
So would you like to speak, just to summarize the letter for us?
Okay.
And introduce yourself.
So hello, my name is Steve Witten, Tree Warden for the Town of Littleton, also the Highway Superintendent. So I was asked to review the condition of the trees, three trees, which are at 95 Taylor Street and if the board, Planning Board does approve for the development, they requested that they may possibly have to remove the trees. So I took some pictures and I gave you these, identified two apple trees and one cherry tree. The trees in that area, the condition of these trees are in disarray, they haven't been caved for in years. It doesn't look like they've been pruned or taken care of. And some of the pictures that you have, in the first set, the apples, you can see this a little bit of decay and some areas that, that trees are a little rough, in my opinion. The aesthetics, as it goes, these three trees aren't designed in the area as good trees for the street lining. They may have held a good portion for flowering. The fruit trees will then often attract other animals, but also good for pollinators. But in this condition, I wouldn't object to the removal if, as long as there is a replacement in the value that's placed on it. I've consulted with the shade tree committee, which we talked with and try to handle all of the aspects of handling street trees. So they have helped me to try to state that in this letter here, you'll see, for any removal of a tree under six inch caliper, it replaces one shade tree, no smaller than three to three and a half inches. So that because these are mature trees and it takes a long time to get mature trees, that we're looking at that as a value. In this, it just does say, state that the shade tree committee has tried to develop tree guidelines and come with certain specific species trees that we can help bring back to the community and to the area. So I look at that recommendations for the replacement value. If the trees aren't going to be replaced in that street area or if we can't decide a location that's good because the development seems to be more of a private way, we also placed in there a recommendation that a cost value could be reached, that could be placed into a fund that could be put into the Highway Department that we can utilize to replace other trees in other neglected areas. So that would be my recommendation in that section there. If anybody has any questions?
There's no stone walls there, just trees?
No stone walls, just trees. Taylor Street running from that area has a few from the depot trees that run in that area, but it seems to be. but it seems to be ended right at 95. Then there's a very large open area until it gets around the bend of Taylor Street. So that's why I was suggesting that, you know, we can hold on to some funds to extend it. If this plan goes through, I'm sure they're gonna have a entrance area in some part. And I'm sure they're gonna have a plan to add trees into their development for aesthetics. And this would be a good way for the community to utilize other funds or get things in other areas that we're not funded for.
Mr. Chair, in the old days, we used to have funds set aside for sidewalks and for shady trees. We always collected mitigation funds for those and gave them to the town. So this is just in keeping with how we used to do things. I don't think, we don't have any funds available anymore, right? Have we spent all the shade tree money we had and all the sidewalks?
Shade Tree currently is getting a small amount of money that they put and we tend to get, right now I believe it's about $5,000 annually that they spend on the planting of the trees. I've just purchased six trees that'll be going up, that will be planted. They're also working on certain setback trees and certain things to work with the Highway Department and the community to make sure that these are placed in areas because as we know, we're constantly modifying the roads, the widths, sidewalks, the bike lanes, the paths, everything that we need. So the trees are something that, you know, we have to always look at and take on the cost and the care. The town also cares for all the trees, pruning them, removing them, making sure that it's going. But, you know, that cost for planting, at many times, is not bear.
So if we could get just some money, it would be well appreciated.
You'd find a way to utilize it well.
I, um, did you talk, talk with Rick Finley, I assume, or? Because I, I think he's the one who specifies the, the red sunset maple, which-
Oh, the red sunset maple was one that, so in trying to get an idea of a cost of a tree, the red sunset maple is one that we've used just recently. And I've been looking at, we're, we're purchasing it to place it around the areas.
Okay.
The, the dollar amount that came up was from Quebecios, where we purchased trees. And it's one of the local areas that if we do do a wholesale purchase, they do have a warranty on the trees. Some of the other ones that we purchased do not.
And your number is times two, is that reflects the planting?
That would reflect the planting, or as it's described as, you know, for the caliper, for six inches, you're getting a one-for-one. Anything from the 12-inch, you're asking for a two-for-one. So the cost of the, cost of the tree would be $650. Times that by two, if it has to do the installation, water and care, anything else that's added to it.
So I guess my next question is, what is your feeling about how many, you know, if all three of the existing fruit trees were removed?
If all three were removed, I think that because of the size and the caliber, the DBH would recommend five trees purchased.
Okay. So five-
To replace the-
Times 1,300. Okay.
Just one correction.
Yeah?
I'm sorry.
Nope.
Forgive me. Mark Gallagher from Seal Harbor. We only anticipate taking down two of the trees. The third tree, the only reason I put it there is God forbid a truck backs into it or we dig through the root ball by accident and it ends up, you know, something perishing. I just didn't want to have to come back before you guys for one additional tree. So I put three trees on there with the expectation of only having to take down two. The one, it's an apple.
The apple.
The apple, which is one of the larger caliber trees, is probably in the, it's probably the best condition out of all the three. And it's actually out of our way, but like I said, I just wanted to make sure I covered my bases and I didn't have to come back at a later point in time and say, well, you know, something happened to it now, you know. And we're totally in favor of making the donation to whoever you guys-
To the Highway Department.
Highway Department, where I've worked with Steve and I worked with the Shade Tree Committee as well. And as a developer, we have no problem with the donation.
So then the question is, amount. What do we think, guys? Who wants to speak on this?
Two trees and-
1,300.
Whatever, it's 1,300 bucks a tree.
Well, because you had mentioned five trees.
Oh, no, no, no. So that would be the replacement. So the size, it is, it's kind of spelled out that the size-
Oh, because of the caliper.
Yeah, because of the caliper. So the six-inch one would be a one-for-one tree. Anything above the six inches, the six to 12-inch. So there was one tree at 12 inches, one tree at nine, and one at six. So if the 12-inch tree is removed, then that would be a replacement of two trees. If the nine-inch tree is removed, that would be a replacement of two trees. Because we are purchasing a three-inch to three and a half inch caliber.
So, and then one is six inches.
And that's six inches, that would be removed.
So we're talking about three or four tree replacements?
Yeah.
Comments?
Leave it up to him to get us a hundred. If it's four, four-
Well, we, I think we, you know, this is a hearing. I think we should say, is it four?
I, I do believe so. You could look at the development. The development is approved. And, you know, at the later date when they start and they need the access point, which is going to be the drive, then they would be looking at the removal. Once they then plan and set the removal date, then this action would take place that they would then have to make the restitution compensation. We would then place it into a revolving fund or set up an account that states that, that that money is then placed so that it can be spent for-
So we're not necessarily voting on a specific amount?
Specific amount right now.
We're voting on this methodology of, okay. Okay. Any comments?
So my only comment or question, Steve. So thank you for being here this evening and thank you very much for working with the Shade Tree Committee. How did that come about? Were you, who asked you to become involved?
I guess by position with the Highway Department as Superintendent, one of the roles is the Tree Warden, Mass Qualified Tree Warden. And then I do the inspections of hazardous trees, taking care of all the street trees in town. The Shade Tree Committee is the group of the town residents and the organizations that then look at such, trying to get bylaws passed or take recommendations from residents on where we're going to do. A lot of the work that they did was that, the common work with the, you know, with Rick Finley and the identification of the ash trees, so.
Well, I'm just thrilled that you're here this evening because I had quite a few questions about this. So you've answered my questions and this looks like a very good plan. So I look forward to seeing you at future projects where public trees are involved.
You poor guy.
Yeah. I'll be here on mass, so.
So thank you.
So what would be the appropriate way of disposing of this matter in terms of a vote?
I would recommend you turn to the draft decision and then just insert reference Tree Warden's letter received June 13th, 2024, that outlines the replacement criteria.
Okay. So before we do that, we do need to hear from the applicant and anyone else in the listening and opinion.
Good evening. Mark Gallagher from Seal Harbor Development. I'm here on behalf of the company and discuss with you guys about the trees.
Okay. And we've already apparently had the discussion and you've put in your, your view. Okay. Anything else that you need that you would like to add to the hearing?
On the development standpoint, no. As a personal resident, I would be slightly concerned about a 30-inch pine tree that's in my front yard that could be leaning to the left. What is the replacement value of, you know, 30 to 45-inch street tree that's leaning towards my house?
And it's a pine which will eventually fall.
But it still constitutes, you know, I live up on Oak Hill, so that, that's a, that's one of the scenic roads, right? So that's a scenic road. So technically, if I, that tree, you know, if I ever send some deck, which I won't, I want to take it down as an example. What is the replacement value of a 30-inch pine, you know, when you measure it by the caliber? As a developer, I have no problem with this. As a personal resident, if you came to me and said, it's going to be $10,000 plus the four grand to take it down with a crane, I'd probably be less than pleased.
I don't want to wade into this.
I'm just-
But I do know, I do know that as a homeowner, it's much different than as, as a developer.
That's what I'm saying. You know, I'm, I'm not saying I have extra funds as a developer. My only point is, if you, if I told my, went home and told my wife that I had to put $10,000 into a tree fund for, and then we had to take down the tree on top of it.
I don't think that's what's happened in Littleton.
I'm just, you know-
I think there's a difference in this. You're not developing your front yard. Your front yard has a tree that might be in danger and there's nothing we can do about that.
Right, but it's, but it all falls under this. That's one of the conversations I had with the Shade Tree Committee. As a developer, you know, it's one thing. As a personal resident who lives in here in Littleton.
No, you're missing, the distinction is you have to take the trees out to put the road in. You do not have to take that 30-inch tree. If that 30-inch tree falls down, the town is probably going to bear the brunt of taking care of it because it's probably on-town land. Yeah, and it's going to fall over and they have to get rid of it. It's not going to cost you two cents. All I'm trying to say is it's an entirely, they're two different-
You're probably right.
Two different scenarios.
So I'm, I'm doing work currently in Newton where they've instituted a tree by law that doesn't just look at the trees, but it looks at the root systems. So you actually have to map the root systems, even if they extend onto another person's property? We, that's not-
Thank God.
We, we totally support making the donation to the tree, to the Highway Department. And actually, Steve's been awesome to work with. He's very communicative and I have nothing but great things to say.
Great. So I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve this, subject to-
One more thing. Anyone else? Okay.
Subject to the final determination of which trees come down and the cost associated by the shade tree.
With the Tree Warden.
Tree Warden.
Yeah. I drafted something while I was sitting here. I'll just run it by you. Developer, so I added at the end of the decision where it said the sketch plan, developer shall donate to the town via Highway Department at the rates identified by the Tree Warden via letter to the Planning Board dated June 13th, 2024.
You guys don't need me anymore. How are we? Thank you.
I clerked. I clerked.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I have one quick question. Mark Gallagher? I thought your name was-
I'm the son. Can't you see that? He lives down at 307 Harwood and I live at 16E Oak Hill.
I was like, wait a minute. Has it been that long that I have already forgotten who Mark Gallagher is? I'm sorry. I just had to ask.
No, it's okay. Yeah, there's two of us here.
All right.
Okay. Next item is-
Thank you.
The vote on the definitive subdivision and stormwater permit, Strawberry Farms. We, at the previous meeting, voted on this. Can you give us the status of what we're doing tonight on this? We are review, we, we have had a chance to review the full decision with conditions.
Right. At the last meeting, the board did vote five to zero to approve the definitive subdivision with a, voted a future meeting on the, on the final conditions. So now the conditions are all drafted and reviewed and ready for your final. Any updates in, in a vote?
Do we have any, Darrell, of course, will not be involved in this, but are there any comments on the final decision with conditions?
I have three comments when you're ready.
Go ahead.
So on condition number one, I was just curious why the Water Department was called out. Well, the exception was separating parcels, we did it to the Littleton Water Department. Is that?
Yep. Excellent question. The Water Department did reach out that they're interested in owning any of the open water area in this subdivision because it backs up to some of their additional property.
Okay.
Can we hear from the developers about that?
We had conversations with the Water District at the inception of our coming in front of you many, many months ago. After you voted for the subdivision approval, they have indicated they would like to have us give them a portion of it. I believe the way Marin has written the decision, it will not affect the subdivision. They have to provide us with a plan. They've spoken about the scope of the existing well and it's a requirement that they have protected area around the well, which we support. We're waiting for them to come back and give us a definitive area that we would then lop off, if you will, and deed to them as in a bar.
Okay.
So we're, we're in support, but it's just, we're waiting.
You need a definition of it.
Well, we need to, yeah. They gave us an aerial, a Google map. And it doesn't, it doesn't interfere in any way, shape or form.
And the decision is written in such a way that it's not prejudiced your subdivision?
Exactly. So we can do it as soon as they're ready. The area that they want is essentially underwater.
Yeah.
So it has no value to us.
Thank you. My second question is on condition number six. For the end, it says the access roadway is not able to be accepted as a town-owned public way unless and until it is brought up to the current subdivision standards and a vote of town meeting approves such acceptance. I think we had discussed the fact that this was to be a private way and so I would request that we stop the sentence right afterwards and is not able to be accepted as a town-owned public way, period. I don't think there should be any unless, just simply because. Maren?
Twenty years down the road, when the homeowners asked, how do we make this a public way? That's how they make it a public way. There's no, nothing that we can include in the definitive subdivision that takes away that right for them to update it and-
So they would have to modify the-
They have to build it to subdivision standards and come in and-
It's just a way to signal to the future homeowners that that's the process that they would have to go through.
Okay.
Would you want to see something like where it says brought up to current subdivision standards by the homeowners or by the owners or something to be clear?
Yes.
That there's no town responsibility to bring that up to code, up to standard?
I like that change. Thank you. If we can make that change.
Can we have one more?
Yes. So under condition number seven, it talks about the Homeowners Association or Homeowners Trust if the property is conveyed. Because I thought the, the plan was to, to convey it to the Homeowners Association. I was just curious about the word if. And then because there will be an HOA, don't we also need other guidelines to be in place if there's an HOA? I thought there was something else that might have been missing.
I think there's going to be an HOA.
There's an HOA. There is the long-term stormwater management.
Which definitely referred to, you know, in the stormwater part of this.
Right. And a maintenance contract.
But I think this allows for-
Well, hasn't there always been an HOA though? Anytime there's a subdivision?
Well, for instance, I'm thinking of great harm. I mean, the developer still, you know, maintains-
Yeah, there's no homeowners association in life. That's a public way, if he ever builds it.
A few years ago, the DVW Director started asking for HOAs to take care of the drainage for subdivisions. So that's, that's the direction. You know, while this is moving even further with, with HOA taking over.
That's correct.
Maintenance of all of the drainage.
Town wants no responsibility.
So you were, you were focused on the if the property is-
On the if, right.
But that, that's, that allows for the fact that the developer would still be responsible for, but his intention is to-
I would put when.
When, yes.
When, okay.
I think that's a simple-
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
No.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Do we need to vote again?
Yes.
May I have a motion to vote on the consolidated decision, definitive subdivision decision? May I have a motion to vote on the consolidated decision, definitive subdivision decision, stormwater management permit decision for Strawberry Farms?
I make a motion that we approve the amended stormwater, yeah, stormwater management subdivision conditions of approval as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good work you did.
Good luck.
Thank you.
The next is a similar housekeeping for the 550 and 584 King Street, King Street Commons, amended master plan development, aquifer and water resource district, and sidewalk curb cut special permits. We had voted once again on approving it at the time, and abstained because she hadn't had a chance to look at the conditions.
Thank you.
Have you had?
I have, yes.
Okay.
So based on a conversation that the Affordable Housing Trust had, they raised concerns about when and where the 40 senior affordable units will be built. And, you know, separately, they requested a meeting with Lupoli Company to discuss, you know, where and why or why not cluster together. So I think that's good for them to hear that directly and have that discussion. So my comment as to a question, or excuse me, as to a condition change is, under condition number four, that we actually identify the phase number of when the senior units will be built. Because I know that in the meeting minutes, I believe he said that they would be built probably around phase three. And so if you take a look at what we have in the conditions for that, that's where the phasing chart is.
Yeah, well, we, we had, they, they provided this. They provided, well, here's the basic chart that they provided. I mean, basically, they gave us these graphical representations that were then incorporated into the decision.
Correct. And our discussion centered around the fact that they were doing the same number of units, if you will, just kind of moving the one and two bedrooms around. And then we had the question asked of, so when will the senior units be built? And they verbalized they would be in phase three, but nowhere is it written that it's phase three. And what I'm asking is, can we, can we put that in writing?
I, I think so, because basically, the, the residential phases are one and three. There are, there is residential as part of the four, five, and six, but that, and two, but those are the, what they referred to as the luxury units or whatever.
I don't think we can put it in there because the original assertion was that the, the senior housing was going to be here.
Well, the, the, the conditions allow for that.
Right. So we can't delegate where it's going to be until we know-
Well, we could say, we could say that they can't put them somewhere else unless phase three is, I mean, I guess my point is, phase three is-
And phase three is 2027 to 2029.
Right. So it's, it's by, by tagging phase three, we're pretty much saying, we're pretty much saying, well, you have to, you know, you have to, it, it's sort of meaningless because phase three is going to be the end of the, the multifamily part of the, the project.
Well, my big concern is if it is going to be off-site, then it just keeps kind of getting delayed.
That's a, that's a point.
And, you know, we, we had the broader discussion last time about how important it was to get this done, and so that's my input, is I would like to see it on paper, that there's a condition that they need to work on it, and then it doesn't get, you know, kicked down the road.
Right. The, the building permits at some point would stop issuing if they weren't at an equivalent number at, at 10% of affordable units.
No, she's talking senior. This is not affordable.
So it is-
It is part of the affordable, the way the decisions rent it.
Yeah, but I mean-
So we do have that backed up, but, and just to make sure I understand, so you'd like it no later than phase three? Could be earlier?
Right. Exactly. Yeah, no later than phase three.
If you're looking to add that, I would add it just as a sentence after the whole list of phasing.
Correct.
Just identified, and no later than phase three.
Okay. And that's a good point, because they could keep on with the phases and not have accomplished the-
Right. Because there's still units in phase four and phase five.
Well, except those are, you know, swamped here.
Yeah.
And maybe not suited for elderly, because they'll be above, you know, in the second floor. Whatever. Is there anything else?
What do you think about that comment, Bartlet?
Well, I, I thought that the agreement was that as they build each building, the large buildings, that 10% of them were going to be affordable. It was not clear to me how the 40 were going to be divided, whether they were all going to be together or they were going to be in different buildings. I never did understand what the resolution was on that.
I don't think there is a resolution on that.
I don't think there is, because the thought was always to put them here.
Well, that was an idea at the beginning, but it was never settled.
Well, I think-
Well, we never settled. The town asked.
And when you get the site plans, then that's the point that you look at that.
Exactly. I think that, but I mean, I think the goal, it's a good goal to have these 40 senior housing units clustered.
Oh, absolutely.
That's, that's a good goal. You know, I think their intention is to do them off-site. The one thing I do want to be explicit about is that as the decision's written, if they build them off-site, they still have the right to build 804 units on, so in other words, am I wrong?
Doesn't add to the, does not add to the total number of units.
It does not add to the total. Okay, fine. So they would build fewer units.
You know, the other thing is, we, they've talked to us about coming back, about four sale units, about the, the mill.
Correct.
And my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, they're talking about this summer coming back to talk about four sale units coming to the mill, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I haven't heard from them.
Well, I think the last conversation we all had with them was that they were hoping to come back this summer, and maybe we'll see them before for-
Well, and we just heard, if George is correct, that the sewer operation is put up for six months longer than what we, even at the last meeting, were thinking about.
They already said two years.
Yeah. So what's the disposition of that condition?
So I, I think I saw a lot of this. So adds a sentence that says that phasing for the senior affordable units will be no later than phase three will be constructed.
No later than phase three.
Can you ask them to come in if they have, if they want to come in and talk to us about four sale units, senior units off-site? Maybe we can have that discussion this summer while we're in the middle, we're not that busy. See if they want to come in.
Well, the, anything about an off-site discussion would include, would, in my opinion, need to include the select board, because it's really-
This place, yeah.
Their, their decision, yeah.
It's assuming that the town is contributing.
Right.
So why don't you see if they want to?
Yeah, I'll ask the question about the timing for that decision.
Yeah, ask Ricky if he wants to.
So you're talking about adding that, it's like full of G in eight?
Um, no, it's on page 10 of the decision. Is that what you're thinking, Mar?
Yep, so I was thinking after, after the listing of the phase, after phase seven, just add a sentence.
Yep. I, I'm good with that.
Okay. Because section eight, or with its F subsections, is outlining all the parameters. I didn't know if you, if it is G, G under that.
Are you looking at exhibit A?
It's after, it's after the table.
So the way I-
It's after the, the audit.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Eight outlines 10%.
I mean, you could, you could, you could do it that way.
And then-
See, I, I tend to think about it the way Anna did, because to have it part of the phasing was, was the rest.
I think that's fine. So any more, any other comment? I, I found that the conditions in the decision followed the information that would have been presented to us at the last meeting.
Yep. I appreciate the additional time.
May I have a-
Ricky and Anna do a good job. I mean, Ricky and Mar, excuse me, Anna, Ricky and Mar.
They do a good job, too.
All right.
May I have a motion to approve the, the Kings, the 550 King Street amended master plan special permit and amended aquifer and water resource district special permit?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, guess what?
We're done?
8:05. Darrell, this was a light meeting. And may I have a motion to approve this meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.